For nine months.
Oh, my God. Well, you should get to do what you gotta do. Geez.
Hopefully, I won't lose my hair.
Just came back.
Yeah.
I know, I said that, I'm gonna lose my hair again? She says, "I don't think so." But they don't know, I'm the first one on this drug in one of trial that they have. But it, so I don't feel so bad.
Well, that's good.
Too many.
Take your time, we're here. We're fighting through the crowds to get here, you know?
Yeah, it's not that.
That's okay.
This is so unusual to have just one hearing.
I know.
I watched this thing on the news, it was some small town over by the airport, starts with an L. Anyway, they have a mosquito control board that meets once a month. And the two gentlemen who make up the board-
Oh, I've seen that, yeah.
And it's videotaped and live on TV and everything. And they hold the meeting, they stand up, and it zoomed around. Nobody is ever in the meeting.
Mosquito control.
Mosquito control board, I remember reading about that, yeah.
And they said faithfully, they show up, they do the meeting, they follow everything exactly accordingly, and it was like-
Oh, look at a new clock.
Yeah, I just saw that, too.
Oh, a digital clock this time.
Oh, my God, aren't we special?
I think so.
Well, yeah.
Forty seconds and we'll be stopped.
For more than a half an extra.
And good evening, everybody. It is now seven o'clock by the digital clock up on the wall, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the September meeting of the Laconia Zoning Board of Adjustments. With that, would we have the roll call, please?
R. Mayu.
Here.
S. Burley.
Here.
S. Bogart.
Yes.
O. Gibbs.
Here.
M. Foot.
Here.
And Dean Tripperton, planning director.
Okay, now, roll call, we have a quorum here tonight of five, so that's good. There's no special voting instructions needed. Now, next would be the minutes. Minutes have been reviewed from last meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the correction of Mr. Mayu's name, spelling of his name, and a few other little things.
Second? Discussion of the motion, there being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And as we speed down. Okay. We have no continuations. We have one public hearing. Applicant requests a variance for the use of property. This is application number Z zero, that's Z O or-
Z O.
Two seventeen dash zero zero two two ten Wilson Court. Applicant requests a variance for the use of the property for storage of vehicles towed to the lot by tenant, Batachi Towe. The business is already grandfathered in. Would the applicant please come forward? Tell us how we can help you, oh, before we start.
I just, I just wanna let the board know so that we're not confusing issues here tonight. So that the, the business of the towing company is grandfathered, has been there for many, many years. That is not the issue tonight. The issue strictly is the storage of vehicles on the site. Okay?
Okay, any questions? There being none, I'd like to ask the applicant, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we can help you.
My name is Foster Whitworth, and I purchased the property at Ten Wilson Court in 1998. At the time, it was BCI zoning. I don't know much you want me to go forward, but I'll give you a little bit of history on the property.
Please.
As I know it. And we put a roof on a building, it was in rough shape when I purchased it. And my intent was to put a manufacturing, do some small manufacturing in there. I had a business in Manchester, cutting tools, and I wanted to move it to Laconia. And I wrote to the city and obtained approval to do manufacturing in the BCI zone at Ten Wilson Court, and I have that document with me tonight. It's now eighteen years old, nineteen years old. And I proceeded, and then I had a change of plans, and then in 2002, I brought a tenant in, as I wasn't gonna use it as I had planned. Hughes Automotive, he's, you might be familiar, he's right out here now, across from the, I guess it's the city building on Main Street, on Route Three. But he was with me until eleven. Now, when he moved in in '02, we applied to the city for approval to put up a sign, got approval for that, I have that document. That was in '02. Also in '02, we wanted to pave the driveway over there a bit, about eight hundred square feet. I have that approval from the city. And he hung the sign, didn't pave the driveway, didn't get to that. But then, apparently, looking at the zoning regulations and the tables and the code, in '03, we had a change to DRD for my property and several on that street, and then there were a raft of others. I don't know where they're located, perhaps in that same area, River District, downtown River District. I was grandfathered, as mentioned earlier. Jamie Hughes was with me until eleven, without a problem. And then he left, bigger place. Batachi came in, right behind him, and Derek Batachi's been working there with his business since eleven without a problem. And in 2015, I got a notice from the city that I was in violation of zoning, which had to do with a long-term vehicle storage, or too many vehicles. And since then, there've been several letters, and I've worked with a tenant to try and clean that up. And since fifteen, there have been many visits by me, working with Derek, moving vehicles, and trying to straighten it out, make it look more acceptable to the zoning department. Dean came down and met with me, and gave me some tips, and we worked those out. And just stopping there tonight, it looks a lot better. There are greatly reduced numbers of vehicles there. So he's understanding, and he's cooperative, my tenant. So I'm here tonight to apply for a variance, so I can continue to do what we've been doing.
Okay.
I'll introduce myself, my name's Bill Amon. I work for Mr. Whitworth, I'm his lawyer. And I think he's done a lot of explanation, some of it, I think, is just good for historical background. I think as far as the terms of variance, the board's very familiar with the elements of the variance. I think it's important to just add that the properties surrounding this property are commercially zoned, or I don't think all of them are, I think most of them are, though. The nature of the, I'm sure you're familiar with where it is over by the, I forget what that, is that the Rite Aid or whatnot? I actually live in Guilford, so that's one, you know, I just zip down here, but, so I'm familiar with the property and where it is. But the, as far as the character of the naturehood, what it's gonna look like, what it's gonna feel like, would be really not much different, except that my position has been to get the tenant to reduce the number of vehicles and the duration of time that vehicles stay on the property, because I think those are the two things that are causing the problem. From what I understand, Mr. Batachi has certain regulations or state laws that govern how quickly he can dispose of vehicles. More specifically, there's state police rules, or local police, or insurance regs that tell him how long he has to keep a vehicle, and so on. What I would propose is that any vehicle that he takes onto his lot, stay there no longer than 180 days, and that in the number of vehicles, that he has no more than 25 vehicles. Today, he had 28, but that includes his work vehicles, and I don't know if there's any personal vehicles or workers or whatnot. That's why I'm giving like about three vehicles wiggle room. That's our proposal, we're willing to work with whatever the board would give us. But I think he's getting, he's understanding that he's gotta move vehicles. When I asked, "What does he do with the vehicles? How's he getting rid of these things?" He's essentially believes that after six months, then he's legally allowed to sell these things, or give notice, or move them off-site, or whatever he has to do. But I think as far as the spirit of the ordinance and not being contrary to the public interest, I think those prongs are both met. If there's a variance with some conditions on it, I think certainly helps Mr. Whitworth, because he's gonna have a tenant who's there, who's gonna continue to operate and pay rent, and it's good for the community. I understand Mr. Batachi, I don't know, but plows people's driveways locally, and seems like a pretty cordial neighbor and things like that. So I think he's a good guy all around to have in the city, and to continue to do business and pay taxes and things like that. And then as far as the background information, as far as substantially just, a substantially just prong of this, he's been there for a long time, both Mr. Whitworth and his tenant, and the temporary storage of vehicles, I think, is a closely enough related use to the property. He's not asking to do something wildly outside of the realms that you would have in that business. But I think the balance of the, the city's interest is that they don't have 50 cars there. It becomes an eyesore, it becomes a problem, or things like this. That, that's totally reasonable. We came up, or I should say, I came up with the 25 cars, because it's based upon what he's gotten it down to now. I think the other thing, too, is, and we're talking about this in the hallway, said, you know, if you clean up your act because you want something, that's very different than cleaning up your act because you know you should. And one's genuine, one's not. And so my concern would be that the tenant is taking steps that he's not gonna then just backslide and go back to bad habits and touring vehicles, because then we'd be back here, and no one wants that. So that's why we're thinking, let's put a limit as far as cars, and then he'll know, this is, this is what we have, this was a variance, this was kind of a special thing that we got. And so you gotta stick to this. So there's a lot of ways that the city could enforce that if they wanted to, you know, you could drive bys, you could have him keep a log, but there's, you know, we could think of different ways that he could track this up. But I think that gives him enough time to operate his business, move vehicles, and comply with the police regs and the insurance laws, and then I think that everyone's happy. As far as the other points, I think a literal enforcement would definitely create an unnecessary hardship for the owner, Mr. Whitworth, because that property, I'm sure he could do other things with it, but it's traditionally, it's been used for a long time for towing, and it's in the commercial zone, and so I'm not gonna stand here and say that he couldn't do anything with it, I'd be speculating, but I think that's probably the highest, best use for the configuration size of that property. So I think it would be unnecessary hardship to not grant the variance. If there are any questions or comments, I don't know if anyone-
Is the, is the business strictly a towing business, or do they do repairs there?
I think primarily towing.
Towing.
Primarily.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just going back to the, I know I have to keep on target here, but I understand. So this, you bought the building, and it was approved for a use that was manufacturing?
Yes.
And then it got turned into the towing business? Is that the same, it works?
Well, we don't know exactly when that occurred, so we can't, you know?
2003 is what I believe Mr. Whitworth said, that he bought the property in 1998, and then it was BCI, I'm not sure if this predates me, but as far as, that's what he believes the zoning was. And more importantly, that that zoning designation allowed for the storage of vehicles. I don't think that gives him, certainly doesn't give him a right to a variance, I mean, he doesn't have a right to a variance. But it just gives you kind of the background from his perspective, he bought this, that use was allowed, it changed, he used it as Hughes Automotive.
I'm just curious if he has a permit for the current use, I mean?
It's, the towing is considered a commercial operation, and, and commercial is allowed in within, within that zone.
Okay.
It's, it's the vehicle storage.
And I went down there today, and it's, and then I, and I got stuck because a big towing truck came in, and all of a sudden, I was like, uh-oh, now what do I do? So I had to sit there, well, you know. So there's a, a house here at the end of the road?
Yes.
Is that a single-family home? Somebody actually lived there?
I don't blame you for asking, I was looking at it tonight myself. It's had various owners. Hughes won, owned it when he was renting my place, he sold it, it's in some trust now, some local ownership, though I did look it up on the, on the record.
I mean, obviously, they're not complaining, they're not here tonight, and they haven't said anything, so.
No, they're, yeah, in fact, I should complain about them. It needs paint, it needs some windows.
But, I mean, it is a tight, a tight space, and then, when you look at the map and you look at this, when, when you go down the road, I mean, everything's happening right here. So what happens all behind the building, is there, I didn't get in there, is there more storage there? Is that where all these 25-
It's openly, and it's part of the property.
Is, is all the storage behind the building, too?
If you go just past the building, there's a dirt driveway, just past the building, that's my driveway, and if you drive down in there, you can see, that's where the vehicles are stored, that we're talking about. It's a, it's a rectangular property. Yes, sir.
A few minutes ago, you mentioned keeping vehicles and storage for up to 180 days. Yet in the petition, you say, "Many of his stored vehicles must remain on the property from 30 to 45 days pursuant to state law."
Right.
Why are they gonna be there 180 days?
Because in talking with Mr. Batachi, or at least Mr. Whitworth, and communicating back and forth, he thought that 45 days was too short of a time to move vehicles. So like I said, 180 days is the, is the ask. I think it's unrealistic that he's gonna move these things within 33, 40 days, 45 days, as it's due. So if it's 90 days or something, and he's gonna have to, he's gonna have to find a way to deal with this.
It could be a junkyard, it looked like a junkyard.
Well, that's not what we're gonna-
I know, but I, but-
Right.
Now, if I'm understanding, and we have someone who deals in insurance sitting here with us, we have all kinds of different people sitting around. Now, if I'm not mistaken, to alleviate issues with the state would take less than 60 days.
I don't know if that's true, and what regu-
A varying for a title, from what I understand, it's 60 days would clear an abandoned title. And insurance and stuff like that doesn't sit around for 60 days.
I think 60 days may be either by regulation or statute, but from what I'm hearing, it is a practical matter, that it, that sometimes with delays, takes, takes longer. And so that's where we're shooting for, for more.
So-
I have an example-
There's a number, there's a number, if, if the board was looking to do something, there is a number there that can be most likely agreed upon, okay? Obviously, 180 days is gonna probably a tad bit on the high side.
Right.
Okay? And we're thinking 45 days is probably not gonna be enough to reasonably keep it in a positive manner, because it would be no sense in everybody being bounced around every moment of the day, okay? And if I'm speaking out of turn, you know, please, let me, no. You know, so I'm thinking there is a number, probably about partway, because 60 days gives you probably clearing all your legal meagles, and then another few days in there to get your disposal, so maybe something around 90 days might be most appropriate to-
Who's gonna police that?
Well, there's, there's ways, okay? Now, every time there's a, in order to clear the title and clear the stuff, there is a means, there's log sheets that are done and stuff like that, okay? Because by no means does the city wish to be in a situation where it has to police and go look over. I mean, because then there's gonna be one of these in here where it's gonna put undue thing, and you would fail that portion, so therefore, we don't wanna set up a situation to where, which one is it that increases police and what?
Demand for-
Demand for-
Public service.
Public service. So we, we dare send, don't wanna go in that direction, okay? Because that's not gonna help everybody. So if we were looking at from that standpoint, you know, the board's gotta figure out, A, if it wants to go in that direction, B, if the timeline fits and looks like it makes sense, okay? Now, that leaves the last thing would be the number of vehicles.
Right, right.
Okay. Not quite sure 25 would be the number.
It's down, so it's 25.
I'm not sure 10's the number, okay? I'm thinking 10's probably on the low side, and-
Yes, sir.
I was down there today, and I took a look at the place, and I was hard-pressed to find a vehicle like you're describing that was either in an accident or waiting to be towed. Most of those vehicles look like they'd been there a long time, and there were snowplows down there in the field, there were some really rusted-out vehicles, and I had a hard time, I couldn't find anything that was, uh-
So you say-
-to be hauled away by an insurance company. But I could, I, as far as the timeline is for the insurance company is concerned, when an insurance company totals the vehicle, within a couple of days, it's gone. They don't wanna pay the storage fee. And I had, I can tell you this as a fact, because my truck was totaled last month, and it wasn't, two days later, they had, handed me a check, and they took the truck down to Salem. It happens that fast.
It was quick.
You know, we, we look at a long periods of time, you're not gonna find that within the insurance companies.
No, a lot of it's gonna probably do with police accidents and stuff like, not with accidents with the police, but police calls where they say you have to come and get the car, then it has to wait, and then if there's legal problems, and then-
Oh, yeah, there are some that do, I'm not saying they're not.
Some of those, so.
But I, you know, have to agree with what Paul said. I was down there today, too, and it looked like a graveyard for vehicles, not a vehicle storage. So, you know.
One of the examples that the tenant Derek Batachi gave me was the case where somebody had died in a vehicle on the highway in an accident, and he got the job of towing the vehicle back. And talking to the family of the deceased was very difficult. He's not allowed to enter the vehicle into the parking compartment, doesn't even know who owns it. And so that process you're talking about, which is 60 days would be normally begin at some point when it, that is all settled. So it's not impossible that you could get 30 or 45 days into it before you begin the 60-day recovery, you know? So there's a 90-day or 100-day situation right there. It's not perfect, it's not clean, you know, where-
But that's more the exception.
It is, but, but two or three like that could make it look, you know, when you go down there.
But if you, you're not gonna have 25 cars sitting there like that.
Right now.
So, like I said, that's a special, a special thing that happens, and everybody knows that there's gonna be special exceptions to, not as far as the amendment in the book, but there's circumstances that happen that will prevail to keep something there. But if you use that along with a number of vehicles that are left on the lot, if the two work in tandem, then that's gonna self-take care of itself, because there's gonna become a point where, let's say, 15 cars were allowed to be left, and all of a sudden, he's got no more room to do something, he'll have to deal with that, to lower that threshold, okay? Because I don't think you're gonna have 15 vehicles with, that had someone who-
No.
You see what I'm saying?
Sure.
So working the two together, if you're, if you have 15 vehicles, and your goal is to not keep them there hypothetically, say, and is the 15, and hypothetically, to the board agrees on something, 90 days, then you shouldn't never run into that problem, because it's not the one vehicle.
No. You're looking at an average turnover.
Right. I mean, because it's gonna turn over itself, or you're gonna choke you-
Some will be gone in a week, some will be gone in 110 days, but-
You'll choke your own business off if you don't carry through and, and, and get rid of, because soon as you pop that threshold, then you're in violation of your own zoning thing. But if, if the two work in tandem, Dean, does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah, this does. And I think-
Hypothetically with the numbers, but, you know, with the special circumstances and stuff, they kinda bounce, but your average number of vehicles should never exceed it using that.
Mr. Bogart, Mr. Batachi's here in the back of the room, I don't know if any recognize him, I just spoke to him, that's where I went off and came right back. So he's willing to, to answer questions if you have any, but I also just asked him quickly about the scenarios where there are car, older cars that are there, what's that all about? I mean, we just had a 10-second conversation, but essentially related to me, that those cars are typically abandoned cars, where there isn't insurance, someone gets in an accident, and then they just, they don't come back and get them.
Right.
At all. So I get that. So I think the remedy to that would be for the tenant to liquidate them.
That's what, scrap yards.
Scrap it, you know, right. And so, again, Mr. Batachi's here, he's willing to speak if you have specific questions, but I can represent at least that those are the older cars you're seeing. Because I, I'm with you, I think that's a concern for a couple reasons of the, the optics of it, but it's also, if you continue to bring cars in, where are they gonna go? You gotta keep a flow, I think that's what we're talking about. So, but, but he did say that it's about 90 days that he, for abandonment of a vehicle, to let that process work, so-
That was a good guess on my part.
Very good guess on your part. But like, you wanna get the property so it's a little more streamlined, get rid of some of the older cars, it'd probably help Mr. Batachi's business, too, just for clearing up. Maybe gives him more ability to tow more cars, I don't know, but I'm saying, there's no downside to it, to clean that up.
The problem I have is, that kind of operation usually is on the outskirts of town, not right in the heart of the city, and that's a, that, you're talking about urban blight.
Well, until 2003, the BCI zoning permitted that. Long-term vehicle storage and many other uses, which you might also find here.
Long-term vehicle storage is not running a junkyard. There's a big difference, long-term storage-
I'm having trouble making this-
-is a building where people put cars in for the winter, or while they're going on vacation and things like that, and get them out of the elements, and that thing. This, this place is a junkyard. I don't care, you know, you can call it what you want.
It might look like a junkyard, and I agree with you, the goal here is to actually get it to look less like, as you call it, a junkyard, and more like what it is, which is a towing operation. Towing operation's gonna have some vehicles there, but it should be a finite amount of time. I think the difference, in my opinion, would be that a junkyard is something, we all know what junkyard is, there's a car there, and it's there for, since 1979, you know, or maybe not that long. But it's, it's almost permanent, that there, you're just adding vehicles to it, and they're there for, for junk. We want that.
If I may.
Yeah, please.
Another representation, you can take Al's towing right there on the-
Al Rayford, yeah.
Okay. They maintain everything right there, to the best of my knowledge, right there on the property.
He does.
They have limited space to work with, they, they perform the function very well, so they must be cycling things out, and it doesn't look like what you're saying, does it?
Yeah.
I mean, so, and that's not on the outskirts of town, it's kinda close, but-
But it's right in back of his building, and he's got a fence around it.
Well, this, you know, with all due respect, I mean, this is a pretty off-beak, it's off the beaten path. I mean, it is on a back road, and it's not like it's highly visible from the road. If you didn't know it was there, you'd never know it was there.
You, it's a destination place.
Yeah, you gotta go looking for it.
You're not gonna happen onto that place unless you're-
No, but still, it's still there.
It is still there, but the business is operating, it's been operating for a while, so we have to-
That's agreeable. And we gotta, that's what we're trying to do, to see if we can come to some common ground here on it, and, and be able to move everybody forward, and, and have something, because we know in a towing and place and stuff, they can have it not look like a junk-
Like a silver trucking yard, yeah.
Okay. And, but we don't wanna restrict it to the point where it chokes the business off, so that's, you know?
Right.
We don't wanna have, you know, we, we enjoy having business in the town, so that's that happy medium we keep coming back to.
Yeah, I agree, I think that's, that's our whole point, I think that's what the variance is designed to do.
Okay, I'm gonna stop just for a second, I got some legal things I have to do in order to continue moving on forward. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak forward against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. You can, Derek, you can speak at any time, you don't have to, because you're part of this, or you could speak now if you wish, I mean, okay?
Just a couple of things I wanted to clear up, you had spoken about a fence around the yard.
Would you go over to the mic?
Just say your name. Derek Bataki, owner of Bataki's towing. You had spoke about a fence around the yard? You had spoke about a fence around the yard.
About what?
A fence around the yard, we did have a fence around the yard, and the city took it down to fix the drainage problem, and they never put it back up. It was rolled up against the, the salt shed, and it never got, you see the post there and everything. And as far as I'm aware, the, the vehicle that's right out front, the flatbed that's torn apart, I was hit head-on by a drunk driver about a year ago, and that's my service truck, that I'm trying to get back in order to, uh, get back on the road, to serve the public. The other problem with the cars, they're not necessarily always in an accident, they're abandoned on the city streets, misuse of plates, not coming back from my car, to date, I've had 42 of them that I've processed and got rid of. Some take longer due to being out of state, I had a 2014 Camry that was stolen out of New York, it took two and a half years to get ownership to be able to process it. Not always its criteria of 90 days, it takes longer in some of them, it's case by case. We did clean up the yard quite a bit, I'm not selling parts there, I'm not stripping the cars out there, none of that stuff's going on. Some of them do look a little horrific, due to what they were involved in, and they're not necessarily always in an accident, and I noticed you said two days about your vehicle, that doesn't always happen, there's two vehicles there right now that have been there over a month, the insurance company's been saying they're going to come pick it up, it doesn't always happen that way. I've been doing this for 20 years, it's not in and out, you know, two days all the time.
I realize that, I was lucky.
Yeah, you were very lucky, but by all means, I don't want the cars anything anymore than anybody else wants them there. They're hard for us to juggle around, and when someone comes in and says, "I want the car way out back," I've got to juggle all those cars around, but if we all stop towing in this town, you know what the streets would look like?
Oh yeah.
I mean, I'm talking anything abandoned, like parking garage, two, what was it, two months ago? We had to take four cars out of the parking garage, that were left there for months, then the last time I was...
What cars would you say are on the lot right now?
Maybe 18 to 20?
It seems to me that the, the 180 days has moved if you, if you put a finite number on the amount of cars.
Well, that's the other, that's exactly what I was just thinking, is if, if you put like a 20...
20 cars max, let them deal with it.
Then, yeah, then the time period really doesn't matter, because once you hit the 20, you've got to move something so that you can bring something new in.
They did just, we used to have to wait 30 days before I could apply to the state to find out who owns it, then I have to put it in the paper and have an auction and all that stuff, but they just changed that, and I believe it's 15 days after I, it's on my property. So that may speed the process up quite a bit, but, said, I, I have the police come down, they do it, the VIN form for me and everything, and I apply to the state every time I have an abandoned car. And that can come from anything that was left on the side of Union Ave, to something that was left up in the, the parking garage, to just left somewhere, and you wouldn't believe in the last two years how much that has increased in this city.
Do you have any other sites for off-site storage?
No, I am looking into that as we speak.
How is this going to be enforced? You say 20 cars?
Well, everyone, they'll have to do spot checks, and if they find out there's more than that, they just have to send them a letter. I mean, you know, they're not going to go over there every week, but they certainly would, you know, it's like, we give permits all the time, and who knows? I mean, you can only do a drive-by and...
I mean, I can do anything else, I mean...
No, I'm just asking, I, I do, you know, you say, "Well, you can have 20 cars over there," and we...
Well, we have to, we have to do something, because we just can't say, "You can have as many cars as you want," because then it would become just a disaster.
If there's, if there's something quantifiable...
Yeah.
Then that's a beginning, right now, there's nothing quantifiable, okay? So if we...
All right.
Put a number on it. Yeah, well, I, I, to answer your question, it's kind of like if you took a, a, a boarding house, we say, "No, what, what stops them?" No one's going to go over and look to see if they turned it into a boarding house or not, or anything else as far as the zoning is concerned. We have to rely on the good nature and the, of the law-abiding citizen, okay, that they're going to hopefully follow what they should be following, should be, now mind you, I'm saying, so, yes, sir.
I guess, is there drainage down through there? Is there water along the edge of that property?
I don't think so, because it's next to the salt shed for the, for our DPW, it's right there, I mean, you can, I've been on the property and I've looked across, and you can, you can see things like that, and just to let you know, the towing company has been a good, I'm going to shoot a little thing out there for the business, they've been part of the town for a long time, since I've been here for 16 years, and the other thing, I've seen them volunteer a lot, helping, they've, for the high school, like towing the floats and stuff and everything, they've been, you know, stand-up as far as a business can be, as far as participating and stuff, you know, so that's why I sit and I look at all these pluses that go along with it, and if we can just get through that portion of it, we might, you know, retain another business and someone who's been a good citizen and a good business citizen for the city, you know, that's the way I see it. So, any other questions? Any closing comments?
No, I appreciate everyone's time, I appreciate Mr. Bertacci for being here, and I think the idea of having a, just a number of vehicles makes a lot of sense, it makes it simpler, and as far as enforcement goes, I mean, well, we're here because someone in the city decided to check it out and send a letter, and we're not trying to create more work for zoning department or anyone else, I mean, I think these two gentlemen are, as you say, are stand-up people and businessmen, they, they want to do the right thing, and, and they have for, for years, so I think if, if they're granted this variance, they're going to, they're going to adhere to this, if there's, something comes up, they're, they're going to reach out, but as far as enforcement, if that's an issue, so far, I think history's shown that they've adhered to what they need to adhere to, and they will.
And one last question I had, in order to, to pull for the city police department and stuff like that, that your business has to be within the city, right? And you've got to maintain the car within the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought so.
Yeah, it's right in the city contract we get every year, we have to be within city limits.
Well, with that, I'll close it down to the public, and we'll bring it to the board for discussion.
Well, I'm in support of it with, with just regulating the number that will be on this, on the site, number of vehicles on the site.
And I agree with that, I think that's...
It would kind of make the time irrelevant.
Yeah, it does, because if you're limiting the number of vehicles, obviously, they're going to try to process them through as quickly as they can, so they can keep bringing new vehicles on, I don't think we need to put a, a time limit on then, then, then if he has one that winds up staying there, like the out-of-state one that was two and a half years, then that's the way that goes, that's just one, yeah, one of his...
Of his allotment.
Yep, one of the allotment of the number that we decide, so I think that's an excellent idea.
I think it'd be difficult to go and enforce, when did this one come in, or when is this one in there?
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 there are documents that are done, there's pickup orders and stuff like that are dated, so that would, it makes it possible, but like you said, it's an accounting issue of time versus the quantity, and I, I agree with y'all.
We have to agree on a number of vehicles.
What do y'all think? I know 25 is probably not, is on the highway.
You can look at it, a little Google Earth there, at 28 vehicles on it, it's dense, there's no moving in the lower back corner around.
He said that there's 18 there right now.
Yeah, and this was just, just a random, you know what I mean, but when you look at it, at that density, it's hard to get a truck to move anything around or do business, so, that's a lot. I'd say 25 is a lot. It's got to be reasonable, because these guys tow...
A lot.
A lot, there's a lot of movement.
That's what I was saying, a low number would strangle the business out of business.
Yeah.
So...
It seems like a reasonable number to me.
Which one?
20. It's not going to play on a garden if he has 15 with the extra room.
That's true. It's realistically looking at it. 20?
20.
20? I'm not hearing any thoughts from you, Suzanne.
Oh, no, I'm fine, whatever you, whatever you guys agree to it, I'm fine, yeah.
All right, will they entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept application number 202017-0022, if I'm right.
Stop for a second, stop for a second. I want to stop you, if I may, am I allowed to stop him? You didn't get started yet.
No, I only got steam up.
Now, that's for vehicles, any... Vehicle, 20 vehicles only.
Temporary storage of up to 20 vehicles.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a definition of the word "vehicle," because when you pull out just a little bit, look in a little Google Earth, and you wander over to this place on Union Ave, there's 15 boats in the yard, and that's not really a boat storage place, or boats vehicles.
I don't, I don't think there's boats in that place.
Just, just over something, you see a lot.
No. Boats would not be vehicles.
Boats are not vehicles, all right.
So what was your point, what were you trying to do?
I think you were just trying to make sure that we weren't going to wind up with boats.
Or...
Watercraft or...
Anything, you know, this is vehicle.
I think vehicle, word "vehicle" is understood.
Anything other than a...
Okay, that's good.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead.
So even if it's a motorcycle with two wheels, it's still a vehicle? Property address of Ten Wilson Court Laconia, with Foster Whitworth being the applicant. This is a variance request for a storage of vehicles in a lot that's used by Bartaci's towing, and this is previously a use that's been done with this, done on this piece of Being that Bertaci's towing, the business of it is a movement of vehicles, part of the, what happens is there are vehicles that are not able to be processed immediately, so I, um, suggest that we accept this application with limitations of 90 days on, or with 20 vehicles, with a 20-vehicle limit on the lot. The variance will not be contrary to public interest, because this is a longstanding business, it will help clean up the area as well, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, this is a, a compromise, though it works well for both the town and the business and the property owner. Substantial justice is done, because we maintain a good business within our community, the value of surrounding properties are not going to be diminished, because there will be less impact on the property than there currently is, and little enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship in that this business would not be able to operate within our community.
Okay, we've got a motion, the number 20 was...
Number 20 for the number of vehicles that are stored on the property at any one time.
Clarification, did you limit to 90 days, is that?
I, no.
I saw you said something about 90.
Yeah, no, I stopped.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll take a second.
We have a second, discussion of the motion, there being none, all those in favor of the motion?
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Please, Stu.
I've got, for him, sorry. The application numbers, could, could they be done a little more legibly? I, I can't read these numbers, sorry to say.
We'll try to make it a little bit bigger if we can, sure. Are you asking him, like, if we can just change the application number, because if we can change the application number, we can, we can make it, it doesn't have to be Z O, we can change it to like, I'm sure we can...
Well, the Z Os...
No, I think it's just, if you look at it, it's just probably a combination of it's small and your handwriting, so if it was just clearer, you know what I mean, that, and a little bigger, it would help us all, because then we refer to it and...
Yeah, just, just, I said nothing about handwriting, because my writing is atrocious, but bigger.
Figure, yet still sloppy.
But sloppy is a little bit easier to figure out.
This particular part is filled out by the applicant, so we're, we have no control over that.
All righty then.
Anyway, we do our best.
Thank you.
So I presume that the longer-term goal is to go paperless, is that the ultimate goal that we're trying to achieve?
Sure.
If I can prepare myself for the future, I'm...
We're ways off from doing that, but yeah.
Okay.
It's not going to be, not going to be this year, probably not next year either.
No, I kind of like paper on both ends.
I, I like having paper for something like this, yeah.
Anything else before the board tonight?
Will we adjourn?
There's one other question before that. Did the lawsuit that's with the Gabe, not the Gables, the deck?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Is that still...
That is still pending.
Jeez.
Where's that?
Pogus Park Road.
I didn't know there was a lawsuit.
Yeah, neighbor, neighbor versus neighbor versus the city or something like that.
I thought we approved it.
We did.
We did.
He went to court.
Oh.
Now, the other neighbor.
Yeah.
We disapproved it, one neighbor.
Does that affect us, or is that between them now?
No, it's the city, too.
Well, the, technically, they're taking the board to court, but...
Oh, really? I don't understand anything about that.
Our, our legal representation will, will be acting on your behalf.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
No worries for you guys.
No, I know, no. I noticed...
But it's being, it's being dragged out.
Because we, you know, we go out there in our boat all the time, and I just see the construction's like stopped on that house, there's nothing happening.
I was wondering about, uh...
The green, where are the greens?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
That's ridiculous.
So, anyway, oh well, small town, small neighbors.
Okay. Anything else?
Will we adjourn?
Second.
All right.
All right, thank you. Look at that, quarter of eight.
Boy, dog's going to be so happy.
Good stuff.
Best of luck to everyone.
Oh, yes, hopefully, like I said, it's every three weeks and so...